When we're up.
It's now the morning.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Litchfield Planning Board meeting for January 22nd, 2013. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, pretty light agenda tonight.
So, we'll be up by 7:30?
Yeah. It's nice and warm in here, it's cold out there.
Mine, too. Pellet King.
So, our first item this evening is a conversation about road acceptance procedures. I was hoping we could have had the, uh, the road agent or the engineer available.
Lou Karen was supposed to be here, so I don't know if you wanna postpone that.
Oh, is he gonna make it?
He said he, yeah, he said he would make it.
Okay, yeah, well, let's bump that. How about our revised draft for grant applications? I have additional letters of support coming, but not in hand.
Okay.
Uh, the Cable Committee did vote to, uh, allow us to use their hours towards our goal of, um, um, matching.
Okay. And I just did a rough estimate when I folded that into the budget. Um, it's all kinda lumped in. I can, hold on, two different stacks of paper here, working, old school today.
Me, too.
Get the roads out of the way. Um, and just to touch base on the Cable Committee, um, portion of the match, I had that estimated at, uh, $312. That was looking at, um, a total of 14 meetings, where meetings would be, or the related portion of the meeting would be anywhere from, uh, an hour and three quarters to two hours, but generally assume two hours. Um, so, that was the amount I had folded in, so we just need to make sure that that correspond, corresponds, or I think even if it's generic, then it says that it's at $12 an hour per meeting. It'll cover it.
Okay, good.
Um, in terms of revised application, should have more than enough copies this time around. It's, um, not significantly changed from the last meeting, because I think at that point, we were looking at the narrative and felt pretty comfortable with the narrative, if I recall correctly. Um, what has been updated is, uh, the timeframes for each task, as well as the total cost for each task. The total cost represents the grant funds plus in-kind match plus cash match, and the cash match being, um, circuit rider time. So, those have been updated, and the budget has been, uh, completed on the appropriate budget form within the application for a total grant application of $27,500. Of that, 8,200, 8 thou, uh, 1,820 being cash match, which is circuit rider time at meetings. Uh, in-kind match of 5,210, and that is predominantly, uh, your time here at Planning Board meetings, and it's estimated at five board members being present per meeting. Obviously, we frequently have more than that, but to have a quorum, we need our five and, or five, you know, it's a good number to go with. Um, so, five members times, you know, the 14 meetings, times a couple hours per meeting, times the volunteer rate. Then also added into that is the time associated with both Joan and Donna being here in the evening, um, at the meetings. Uh, there is a little bit extra added to your time to cover for some of the outreach that will occur, that would be perhaps outside of a meeting, um, Cable Committee, and that was it. By and large, I try to estimate very conservatively on the, on the in-kind contribution of match. I prefer to err on the side of caution rather than, um, bind you to more match than is feasible ultimately. That's the budget. In a summer, in a nutshell, I've touched base with Jason, who says it is on, uh, the Selectmen's Agenda for, uh, next, next Monday evening, and he also has a copy of what you have here now that he can present to the Board. Uh, if we have no further changes, we can kind of wrap things up and keep it moving forward. The pieces of the puzzle that we need to attach to this at this time are those letters of support. Uh, we'll need to do up a letter for you, Russ, to sign that commits to your participation and in-kind match, contributions of match. Just circle that one, make sure it's on the to-do list. Um, the Selectmen at their meeting next week, in addition to signing off, signing the actual application form itself, also need to make an official, or to, to quote, "We need from them a signed copy of the governing body's official act or resolution authorizing the filing of this application." So, that is what Jason is facilitating for us. And then the other supporting documentation is just the various plans, um, and reports that we've identified here. I had fun finding new electronic versions of everything that had been hyperlinked, now that the town has a new website, and some things are, particularly the economic development reports, are no longer on the town's website, which was a, I wouldn't call a hidden page in the first place, but it was not one that you could link to directly from any other page on the website, but by Google searching, um,
Do you need me to get them put up there?
It's gone now. I don't know that whole business slash economic development.
Joan will just have to create a link to it.
Okay, that's possible. I did find all of those documents either, um, because NRPC had worked on them. They were either on our website, or it looked like some of that work had been funded through, we call CTAP, um, which was part of the I-93 widening, um, planning assistance for communities. And they have a great archive of everything that was ever prepared or written with, uh, CTAP dollars on their website, and so I was able to pull from there for some links. And while doing so, I found a few other things that were interesting, so I've added them to the list of, of different plans under the readiness to proceed at the end. Any other thoughts, comments, suggestions, revisions?
I think this looks great.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you very much, Jen.
You're welcome. The ideas all came from you guys and your conversations, so. I'm merely the scribe. Okay.
So, what do we need to do with this this evening?
This evening? I, yeah, I guess if you're okay with it and good with it, maybe we, that would be a good idea to have a motion to, um, move forward with it as drafted.
Before I entertain a motion, would my alternates care to vote as voting members this evening? Thanks. So, who wants to make a motion, if anyone?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that, um, the Board, um, accept the New Hampshire Community Planning Grant Round Two Application, um, as written.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries unanimously. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, zero, zero.
And Russ, I'll get emailed to both you and Joan a copy of a letter of commitment ASAP.
Thank you.
It'll essentially be last, the last ones, with a few words tweaked.
Yep. I'll be ready, pen in hand.
All right. All right.
Okay, so next, how survey results relate to the master plan?
This is a kind of a first pass-through at trying to match up side-by-side what we heard next to, um, your vision and major goals as they're cited in the master plan. So, what I did is I took, just from the, uh, executive summary where you have, uh, your vision stated, there are, essentially the vision is in that three bullets, uh, and then it is followed by a summary of the major goals of the plan as they are connected to and support, directly support the vision. And so, that's what you have here in, in this chart. It's just, um, the three bullets from the vision and those items that are summarized from the goals. Uh, the next step we could take would be to go to the goals and objectives section. It's done by plant chapter and really get a little bit more detailed. Um, just in terms of some general observations, I, um, what was stated within, uh, the goal portions of, kind of elaboration of the vision, had less emphasis on economic development than, um, the survey findings perhaps suggested. That otherwise, by and large, it seemed
Lined up nicely.
Pretty lined, yeah, pretty well not lined up. Um, I think, you know, how I place these things next to the survey findings, and a lot of them you could, are interchangeable, but I tried to at least find one thing from the master plan that correlated to. I think you can look at, though, the findings on, the column on the left and think there is more there than there is necessarily in those items to the right, but some of that is simply because I didn't repeat things, where some things might repeat in relationship to different survey questions. But how I approached the survey findings was really big picture, big picture question, what those top things were that we heard.
The action of the town should not take its toll on multi-family housing?
That was, um,
That was a real thing.
That was one of the things that folks said no. There were more that said no to that than said yes. I can tell you the perfect, the proportion.
Which is pretty easy.
The multifamily.
Pretty easy, just requires a change in state law.
That is one way to think of it. Multifamily. 29% said yes, the town should allow multifamily, and 71% said no. Gives you some idea of what you're facing at town meeting.
Yep.
I think the misconception is they really thought they had an issue, that they had a choice.
Right. Although it was stated at the top of the survey that there is a state law that says thou shalt, thou shalt. You have no choice.
People don't read directions, though.
We're all gonna blame Russ when it gets forced on our throat after it gets turned down.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll be tired and feathered and run out of town.
But smiling.
He's hoping for it.
I don't mind the feathers, it's the tire that bothers me.
So, a next step that we could take with this is, in looking at those, uh, more detailed goals and objectives in the master plan, we could pull forward those, um, and highlight those that are, have a, I guess, a greater priority, um, that based on the survey results, here are those things that come to the forefront of those goals that are still, um, still applicable and still
Still important to the population.
Important to the, exactly. Um, so that would be a next step of going a little bit further into this process. Uh, and I think that would be just a, a separate, not integrated within here, just get too messy, but taking those and just saying, okay, we already know this. Let's take these and rank them, or something to that effect.
Here's where the alignments are. Build on that.
Thoughts, observations that you have from reading the survey results? And comparisons?
I'm surprised and pleased to see how well-aligned the, the master plan from a decade ago is to today's desires.
Mm-hmm.
Shows the master plan is still relevant.
Right. I think to some degree, I also noticed, though, that some things, um, you could show that there's been some progress towards their accomplishment as well as going through, and so that might also be, you know, another, if we're gonna sort out those goals and objectives, that might be another bin that we could put them in, is this, this one's, yeah, achieved or well, or well underway, and next steps might be that next approach.
Yes, I have a comment.
Yes.
I would like to know how we're gonna create more opportunities for commercial industrial development while we maintain the rural character, maintain farms,
Mm-hmm.
and maintain small-town feel.
So, that's part of this whole grant application that you've got forward, and looking at the next step being that future land use map. It's starting with a mapping exercise where you look at and say, where are those farms? Where are our, our opportunities to expand commercial and industrial that does not overlap those areas that we wanna protect, and going from there? And then revising the regulations.
Unfortunately, they do overlap.
Well, i- in some locations, perhaps they do, but part of what we're gonna have to go through is that decision-making process of figuring out how to do it without creating overlap.
I'm just thinking, like, south end of town.
Right.
You come into the south end of town, really before go to the first field on, on the right, it's gonna be more. Because we'll just say all the farms are along the river on the left.
Mm-hmm.
Well, all the commercial development would pretty much have to happen there on the right, or would have to happen at the north end. Do you maintain the small-town feel if you're driving through the commercial development before you can get to anything else?
Well, those are all questions that we're gonna have to debate. There's a whole reason we got 14 different meetings set aside to work on the project.
That's what I was thinking of the last time I
Yeah.
came across my mind, so I wanted to say meetings, put it in every step.
Well, you get past that initial clutter and open up into farmland, open space, small town. So, yeah, the gateway in is, is a bit, uh, less perfect than we would prefer. But then, once you're in, it's awesome.
Once you're in, you're in.
Yeah.
The way you do it is you take those signs and say, welcome to Litchfield, and just move them beyond it.
Oh, pre-Litchfield.
The plant corn in front of you.
Everybody will think it's Hudson. The toll booth there.
It's not a bad idea.
But it, it also gets at, um, the first step is the mapping exercise, but the second step is to try and unders, um, identify what you want things to look like. So, part of that might mean we start looking at, just literally just looking at images, different photographs, looking at, you know, everyone come in with their favorite, you know, pictures of their favorite places, um, and try and understand what we want things to look like. And then we take and say, now that we know that, how do we craft the, the ordinances so that the ordinances lend themselves to promoting that form of development? It's not just thinking about, you know, the plot of land, but also how that development is shaped on the, that plot of land, and making sure that those, uh, that guidance is structured into the regulation and ordinance.
Right.
Was Albuquerque always planned to be the town center? Or where we are now? Because it says the, uh, village center with residential commercial development. Was the town center, a decade ago, planned to be?
There's been no planning that I am aware of, a town center. There was discussion about trying to make, start to make this into a town center.
Yep.
And there was discussion about changing, uh, required lot sizes, make them smaller. So, in other words, you get, I'll call it, more of the, um, allowed small mom and pop commercials-type development, stuff like that. Instead, allow it to build up around the town hall, this type of area. But the Planning Board, m- many years ago, decided that, um, they had other things that were, they wanted to work on, and that wasn't one of the selected topics, so.
And that might be part of where this next project goes.
I think it's important, it's not going to identity to the town, no town center.
And is, that is something that was identified as what can make the town even better.
Because there's, there's multiple places, I mean, I, I wouldn't want to think, I wouldn't think that you'd wanna put a town center on 3A. The reason I say that is you don't control 3A. Um, 3A is a state road, and we're not gonna be able to change 3A. Curb cuts and all that stuff are gonna be issues. But if you make it off of 3A on a town road, um, you should be okay. The only downside to this is Hillcrest is a state road.
Hey, don't we own a lot of land? Wasn't it talk about, uh, building a library in this town or land around us here? Years ago, PlayStation.
I don't know about a library, but I do know that, um, a couple things in the library, I do know that, a couple things on this land, they were discussing putting in a safety facility here at one point.
Yep.
So, there was that. Um, the property next to the library, just to the north of the library, has been bought. It's owned by the town, so if we wanted to expand the library or put an addition onto it and expand it out, we could do that as well. That's up to the trustees.
Any other comments, input, thoughts?
Anything I got wrong? All right.
I, I'm a little confused on the vision as to foster and enhance this, uh, community spirit.
Ah, copy verbatim. I am not editing your, I did not edit your vision. And that might be something that, that might be another next step. Are there, are there things here that you wanna edit? Um, and what you might want to do, um, as, as something to come out of this is draft up a revised, uh, vision statement and synopsis of those goals that lend themselves to accomplishment of the vision. That might be another, kind of, a next step at which you could then, um, adopt into your master plan or as an update to your master plan. If you would wanna do that, that'd be something that we'd need to, um, schedule. Um, we'd either, we could either start a conversation on later this evening, if there is time, or you could, um, add as a, agenda item for a subsequent meeting.
Yeah, I think it's worth, uh, keeping on the agendas, you know, at least bring up the topic every month or every, every third meeting, or
Okay.
as it seems appropriate to, to shake it out and, uh, discuss it more. Ready to jump on to the next agenda item?
We can go back to one.
Yes.
Do you know, Mr. Karen?
Yes.
Good.
Lou, thank you for joining us this evening.
You did say 7:30, right?
No, 7:00, but that's okay. We're still here. I might have said 7:30, who knows?
Just, just real quick, since I was killing a tree to get here tonight, um, and to help with the conversation of where we left off, circulate a couple things. First is where we left off with ideas for revisions to Appendix A. Second is where we left off with, and when they come around, can you make sure they make their way to Lou? Sorry, I sent two this way out of habit. Second to come around here is where we left off with revisions to the, um, road requirements in the subdivision regulations. And then, a while back, Jason had drafted, as part of his speaking notes, a review of the current, uh, road acceptance and timing, uh, procedures, and had pulled from, uh, Appendix A, uh, Appendix, and Appendix C. I supplemented that a little bit as well, and then did a side-by-side comparison with what we are proposing for changing the procedures. This time, I did count you here, Lou, so this one, there's one right here for you in the side-by-side. And just as a, a quick note, you'll see, actual, uh, actual language from the regulations is indented in slightly smaller font, and revisions are all in red. So, that is simply just extra info to make sure you went home with your hands full. I killed a complete tree, and we've got stuff in front of us that we can use as part of the conversation.
Lou, you already got this one, right?
Yes. Yeah, finally by the third one, I wizened up. So, if my memory serves me right, you all wanted to speak to Lou for a couple different reasons related to this. One was the overall process and procedure. Being split into multiple different places and locations, does it make sense? And did he have some general suggestions, um, procedurally for how to manage and administer um, procedurally for how to manage and administer the road bonds and acceptance, road acceptance? And secondly, and the more specific item was within Appendix A, there are, um, the methods in which the road bond amount should be calculated. And the question was, is this still current? Uh, or are there different, better numbers we should be using? Or in different or better methodologies that we should be using? And so that was the more specific question, if I remember correctly.
Want to start?
Um, this is a, a conversation that we kind of abandoned right before our town, uh, our hearings for, uh, our items to be on the town meeting agenda, or, and, uh, have just now picked back up. I think by and large, part of what prompted this was some questions and confusion over, um, when a road could be accepted. And also to respond to some complaints that the town has heard is on the timing of moving from that performance bond to the maintenance bond, uh, road acceptance, and that, uh, in the case of a subdivision applicant, uh, they could not have that road accepted, could not move to a maintenance bond, could not apply that second, um, course of pavement until the subdivision was completed, that all lots had been built. And with current economy, that's not happening. There are developments that are sitting out there.
A non-engineering issue.
So a non-engineering issue, um, is what prompted this, uh, in, in part. And so it was more a, if, well, if we're opening this up, let's take a really good, hard look at what we have for regulations and what we should be doing differently. And so I know they wanted to get your in- input on some of what they could be doing differently.
We want input from the experts.
You want to start by, everything that's outlined in red here is a proposed change?
Can do that.
Okay. Not that easy one, first, seven thirty, seven thirty?
Under the subdivision regs, the seven thirty oh five. I don't see any problem with specifying that it, the binder course be held over for winter.
In what way does it function?
It could happen in a, in a small subdivision, like I think Blackbird Lane, if someone had really hammered that one and built all the houses right away, they could have done it in one season, the whole thing.
Yeah.
Binder wearing course, landscaping, the whole nine yards. To have it sit over one winter is probably a good idea. I don't think it's ever happened in town, in thirty years where a project's been done in, in one season, but it could be. So essentially, all your projects have sat there multiple winters before the wearing course gets put on. But no problem with the language.
Are you saying, though, to, to me, there's a difference between having it sit over a winter or completing it as soon as you can? What's the, what's the best course of action to protect the town, the winter?
Have it sit over a winter.
Okay.
If anything may show up with, with frost heaves.
Is that what you'd be concerned with?
That's what I'd be concerned about, mostly frost heaves. I mean, we're checking subgrade, we're checking the gravel grade, we're checking the crushed gravel grade, so we know we're getting the right thicknesses. But we're not out there, when they're placing all the gravel, when they're placing all the crushed gravel. Crushed gravel's a little thinner, through the boulder in there, it'll typically show up, but in the, in the gravel, maybe not. And it's those ten, twelve inch stones that could be down there that end up popping up after a winter, possibly. So to me, that would be a good idea to let it sit, the binder sit there for one winter.
So let me add, is one winter enough?
Yeah, probably, yeah. Uh, the only time it may not be enough is if you have a real dry season and you don't have the, a high groundwater table. I mean, it's, it's the groundwater that causes a lot of it, the moisture. If it's not well-drained underneath and retains some moisture, pushes the rocks up. Now, there's no real way you can measure it, but this at least covers you for that one, one season.
Because to do that would be a change from two years now.
No, it doesn't change, we're not talking the maintenance period now. We're just, we're talking the time that you want to see that binder down there for, before you put the wearing course on. Because you can do repairs before the wearing course. You know, you can drive a tractor over it and leave tread marks, and the wearing course, you know, it's like putting the shirt and tie on, really. I mean, it has structural qual- qualities, but it's really the final dress up. So if things are a little rough underneath, not a problem. If they have to go out there, you know, we have removed pavement that's cracked, shoulder cracking or something. Maybe an oil truck drove over the edge in the middle of March on a warm day. And all of a sudden it broke off. We have to cut it out and replace it. Pave it over, you'd never know it. So I like the idea of at least the one winter. And again, it hasn't been an issue in town that I know of where it's been done in one season. Probably, which one of the next two you're on, do you?
The table one is merely a, just a side-by-side, it's more of a explanation of
Okay.
the, how the process works, um, then supported by the regulations and how we're proposing to change the process. So it's not, you know, so it's redundant, but.
We, we just did that one, um.
Uh, yeah, we did the top one. It's probably, uh, doesn't matter. The table does not have the entirety of Appendix A in it. It just has some excerpts.
So you're thinking of reducing the maintenance period to one year instead of two?
That was one of the other things we were looking at as well.
I'd probably keep it at two.
Okay.
Your town, but two's better than one, from, from your perspective, not from a developer's perspective. And that would take into account situations like groundwater. You may have a dry year and then a wet year, and something shows up that should be fixed. Maybe a manhole cover that gets cracked after one year because of manufacturing defect, but you catch it the second year. I, I don't see that there's any, there's definitely no advantage to the town to reduce it from two to one, other than getting less complaints from developers who are paying for the bond.
And residents who have moved into the new houses on the street and would like to have school buses come down.
That's a separate issue, okay?
That, yeah.
The maintenance, the maintenance of the road is a separate issue from a maintenance bond.
Okay.
Keep in mind.
But the, the lag between the events taking place and the residents finally receiving the full service that they're hoping to receive, just trying to streamline the process to shorten the delays for, uh, for these.
Well, what he's talking about is town acceptance of roads, and you're talking about maintenance bonds.
Yeah.
Two separate issues.
The separate issues.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The town can accept the road January one, two thousand twelve, and then it can keep it on maintenance bond until January one, two thousand fourteen.
Yeah.
And.
Okay. That's where I got confused, the, the acceptance of maintenance. It just threw me, I'm sorry.
There, there's, there's probably some history over time, if you were to look back on other communities, uh, where they have required private developers to maintain essentially a town road with residents. Remember Hooks, it, it was happened many years ago where the developer didn't do a very good job, and there was someone living at the end of a cul-de-sac road at the bottom of a hill, and there was a furnace, an oil burner fire or something, and a fire truck came down. Twenty, actually, at the time, they were building thirty, or thirty-foot roads. About fourteen feet of it was really plowed. The guy was doing it with a pickup truck. Fire truck came down, phew, right off the end of the cul-de-sac, because it hadn't been salted, it hadn't been sanded. So the fact that you, you have a town doing the maintenance work, from the resident who was sitting there on the road writing checks for property taxes, and they look out there and they see half of the road plowed, and they call Frank and say, "What's going on here, somebody?" While, you know, the developer's maintaining it, that's probably not good. So I would say that once you accept the road, you do the final inspection, the developer submits all the paperwork, the as-bills and things like that, and the deeds, whatever you need, that that constitutes a point at which the town could take over maintenance, and then you decide if that's a beginning point for a two-year maintenance bond. And accepting the road would be another step for a Board of Selectmen to accept it. The other thing to remember is, once the Board of Selectmen accepts the road, or the town accepts the road, the Board recommends it, then you can include it in your inventory to get state aid money, which you can't do if the, honestly, if the developer's maintaining it. Not to say that it hasn't been done before, but you could get caught. You understand that part?
I do, thank you.
Yeah. So having a point of acceptance, maybe would be a good idea, and then have a two-year maintenance bond.
Beyond the acceptance.
Yeah, and then as far as the town accepting it with a vote in the town meeting, that's a separate issue.
So what is, you've got, you've got a, a point in time where the town accepts the road. What are the steps ahead of that? Um, the steps ahead of that, of course, are that the developer's going to build the road, they're going to put down the base course, and they're going to do all their construction, or some of their construction. And then at certain point in time, I think what you said or recommended was one winter of base course. They then put the wear course on. How long from wear course application until acceptance should we go? Or should that be immediate?
I think once you do the wearing course, construction is virtually over. What we're looking for after that, typically after the wearing course goes down, is a little bit more work to do, dressing up shoulders, it does a little drop off, uh, odds and ends, cleanup. So after the final paving, we had a stop bar issue on one of the streets that got put in afterwards. So once the wearing course has been put down, let it sit there for a week or two, then they can come back with rubber tired equipment, start dressing up the shoulders. Uh, I want to say the Blossom Court, they had to do that, even though it was a site plan. But it was subject to the regulations. They came back in and had to finish off the shoulders, so there's no edge drop off. And, um, once that, that's done, the only thing that hasn't happened is the grass growing, you know, if they seeded it. And that's what the maintenance bond would cover. But at, at that point, once, you know, you do a final punch list after that paving, and once those items are complete, then they do the final paperwork, the as-bill plans, again, certification on the bounds and things like that. Now, if you go in there and take care of the road.
So, so I'm not hearing any ti- definite time limit from the time the wearing course goes down to the time that it should be accepted? Just at, at the end of the accomplishment of all those things?
I'd say the time, the time would be when the developer completes the submission to the town with all the requirements as specified in your regulations with the as-bill plans. You, you never want to let them off the hook for that stuff, you may not ever see it. So that, the clock would begin, in my opinion, at the time that the material's been submitted and, and someone has reviewed it to check for completeness. And once someone signs off on that, start the clock.
All right, Lou. Let's just say the developer builds a road, we'll call it thousand feet, there's going to be twenty houses, okay? They build three houses at the end of the cul-de-sac, they put the base course down. What happens if they decide to put the wearing course on and want the town to accept it, and there's still seventeen houses to build?
To me, that's.
What protects the town from that point?
Not, not much, just a maintenance bond.
But then you have to prove they did damage.
Yeah, you can videotape it. I mean, who else can do damage? Residential cars on can do damage. The construction vehicles, your concrete trucks, probably the worst, coming in to foundations.
In terms of the sags of roads and stuff, like breaking it up, or?
Sags, breaking it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, hauling, hauling dirt. And I've actually done that, done it many years ago in Dairy. I had a client that was removing dirt from a site he owned here and bringing it to a site he was developing here. And we videotaped the whole road and agreed that this was the haul route, and, you know, any damages, additional damages from what's out there now, the developer'd be responsible for. We videotaped it. That was documentation.
So as compared to now, like Tanegar, I'm not Tanegar, Muzhal has been there for ten years, eight years, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, at least not much.
But, so we're not going by that method now, because there's only one lot vacant on that whole street. But it's not being maintained by the town, it's not being plowed by the town. And that's been there for seven, eight years.
Yeah. And people.
So our concern is trying to somehow to help the town residents in our waiting seven years to get a decent plow down the road.
Oh, maybe, maybe they're doing a good job, I don't know. If you're, if you're starting to hear complaints, there's no complaints, then there's no problem. So you start getting complaints, you get a fire truck goes off the road, or a police car gets stuck in something, uh, you know, the needed issues. Not a whole lot different than when you issue a billing permit that you want gravel access road, so guy falls off the roof, the rescue wagon can drive in there knowing they can access the site. You, you do it for various things now.
So if you accept the road and you do the maintenance bond, it has to be more than two years if you still have seventeen houses left to build?
That's, see, the number of houses is a separate issue, and that's, that's something that you have to deal with. And you are trying to get your arms around it, you know, maybe, maybe it's fifty percent, maybe it's three quarters, one quarter. Yeah, I'd be reluctant to re, take over that road with one quarter of the units built on a larger project. Yeah, I'd be reluctant with that truck traffic.
When I was a substantially complete, right? That's the word now.
The other, the other thing we find too is, uh,
Define what that is.
You get the road all done, and, and this happened on a couple of, a couple of roads in town. Road gets done, it's all accepted, except for the wearing course, it's on binder course. Okay, so from the engineering firm, with the eyes looking at the road, we're pretty well done until we get called back in for either a problem or the final paving. Meanwhile, the builder's out there building away. We're not watching them. Pavement may get torn up, you get trees placed real close to the edge of the road that the road agent don't like. Things happen by the site contractors that have nothing to do with the road, other than they may destroy part of the road. Um, so when you want to let go or allow the wearing course is critical, I think. But again, if it gets broken before the wearing course, you can fix it and cover it over. Once that wearing course is down, you got to patch on here forever until you overlay it.
Question, Cape Cod burn.
Yeah.
Is that considered part of the road itself?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything within the right of way is considered part of the road, in my opinion. And, and also a slope easement that you may have that goes beyond the right of way. Yeah, that could involve sightlines too. Sometimes people put shrubs up somewhere to block sightlines. But I, I think that when, how many units is probably the bigger one to get your arms around. The other, the other stuff, I think, is pretty easy to deal with.
We should define what substantially complete means, because if you leave a vague in a, in a legal document, is.
Yeah, yeah.
Substantially to a builder could be fifty percent.
No, I think now it says you have to have all the houses done before you, the final paving.
This is all, I thought it was subs- something substantially complete, and we're looking at it when we create something else.
That is, substantially complete is when you can do a partial release of the performance bond, so it's reducing the bond amount. So, it's reducing the bond amount. Um, but currently, if you go back to subdivision regulation item, the wearing course was only to be applied once full street occupancy was obtained. And that was the stumbling block that we were-
Which is why Moose Hall doesn't have it, cause there's one lot that's been empty for years.
So, that doesn't accept, cause mine may have put those lots that were left vacant.
Mine too, I moved in three years after.
They got, roads got accepted, roads got paved, everything was taken over, and five years later, they built a house.
That's, that's a tough one.
I guess, like, my standpoint of this whole thing is, my concern is the road. I don't wanna see the road get broken up. I don't wanna see it get destroyed. So, like, one of the questions I had was how quick you could do it, which you've already answered. And I guess if it goes for a five-year period before they put the wearing course on, don't they say last maybe they put a tack layer on, something like that?
We, we put tack layer down one year, two years, five years, it goes down first.
It does?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any disadvantage to it waiting that long?
Not really. It may have a little roughness, the binder course is not as smooth as the wearing course. Uh, sometimes the drainage structures move a little bit over time. You may get a few puddles along the curb line, especially at an intersection. They usually set them to, to the binder course grade, so that when they come in with the wearing course, you got a little bit of a dip. So, and if the whole thing moves, the basins move like rocks, sometimes they just move up and down. But I've never seen it as a real serious problem. Just little minor problems.
Okay. Because the only other issue I had from that point was the people that complained that they want school bus to come down their road and spend eight years, and that developer just has no interest in putting that wearing course on because they still have one lot left that they don't feel like doing.
You still got the bond, and, you know, that's a little bit of a hook, that they're making payments on a bond. And they're paying for the maintenance. So, I, I look at it like, you know, is it gonna cost me fifty grand or eighty thousand to put the wearing course on? And I got one more house left, maybe I'll just forget about the whole thing. But you got the bond, you can pull the bond if they decide to check out. Hefner and Hudson, developer walked, had a cash bond, hundred grand. So, we went in and took the surveyor's plan, the engineer's plans, marked it up. Need to do this, A, B, and C, and met with contractors and put out a contract and gave the developer back ten or fifteen thousand when it was all over. He made a conscious decision to just walk away from it and let the town have the bond. Only happened once that I, in my watch, that I was involved in.
I've heard of it a lot, yeah.
So, how would you recommend the board dealing with the issue of long-term development? Which is really what we're faced with now, where you've got development that's been sitting there for, you know, as we heard tonight, eight years, ten years, whatever the case may be. And they've still got lots left to develop. How would you recommend that we deal with that?
Why, that's, that's a tough one. The way you're doing it now serves the town's overall financial interest the best. You're not wearing your trucks out plowing it. You're collecting the taxes. But, but you may have upset residents, that's the, in the school bus thing and trash pickup, they, you don't have trash pickup here yet. That could be-
I think that's all private, they go down there anyway.
They're good on there anyway. So, the school bus, post office, not an issue, there, I see mailboxes out there, so the post office is driving over them. Just the school bus. And the fact that if the developer doesn't do a good job, you may end up doing it anyhow. Cause you get six phone calls after-
Right, it's a public safety issue.
Eighteen inches of snow in the ground, and the guy hasn't come by yet, cause he's busy making a ton of money doing all the shopping centers. Two days later, it still hasn't been plowed yet. Yeah, you'd get the phone calls.
How do you handle the issue of, once you put a road on maintenance bond? Jack Pinciero, some night, sleep deprived, going down the road with his plows banging all over the place and digging up the road.
Your problem.
No, what I'm, I mean-
It wouldn't be a maintenance, to me, that wouldn't be, in fairness-
It's, it's not, it's not an issue of maintenance bond, but just trying to determine who did the damage is really what I'm thinking.
Well, to cover, to cover yourself, you could do a video, you could have a video recording of the road at that final walkthrough. That shows you, at least on that day, what the conditions were, and if something shows up different. But I don't think you would treat a road, a road that's been accepted, but still on a two-year maintenance bond that is damaged by town forces any differently than a town road that was damaged by town forces. Simple fairness thing.
Could you require the maintenance bond, I don't know if this is how you do it, but get extended, like, if you do go to maintenance bond, there's one lot left, and the maintenance bond is two years, can you make it so the maintenance bond is in effect for two years after the last lot is developed?
Well, you guys are writing the rules. You can, you can write the rules any way you want, cause it's your town.
That gives the money and they can, so if they take four years to do that last lot.
But the, the bigger point is of the damage to the road that can occur during the construction of these, of maybe that one house, I don't-
But that's what you have the maintenance bond for, right? Can you use that money to pay the damage that is done to the road?
You could write the rules up, so that would cover it. What, what we priced into the maintenance bond essentially was a number that would cover the fifteen dollars based on the engineering news record index when that was calculated. That was based on the cost of doing a one-inch overlay on the whole road. That's, that's how we priced it out. And the, and the reason that the formula is the way it is, cause it's simple, that that engineering news record construction cost index is available on a weekly basis. So, you can revisit the fifteen-dollar part and reset the engineering news record index number if you wanted to, to today's prices. I can't tell you how close it is with the escalation factor going back fifteen or twenty years when we, when we developed that. You could, you could revisit that one pretty easily.
We could also substitute dollar figure for that, whatever that is that could not-
You could, it's just coming up- Coming up with the dollar figure, I mean, what this formula does is calculate the dollar figure. If you take the formula out, then someone's gotta come up with a dollar figure, which is always challenged. This, this, no one's ever challenged this one. It's really been sweet, you know? City of Concord, I was looking up their regs before coming here a couple of days ago, and they use ten percent of the performance, of the performance bond. And it makes sense if the project is a hundred percent funded in the performance bond. And some are marked, hoping clearing grub to excavation of subgrade before they ever apply for a bond. You know, like Rick Charbonneau goes in there, pulls sand out for a year. And he's just, not building a road, he's just cleared, cleared it and excavated. And then he starts building a road, he puts a performance bond, while all that earthwork excavation, not included in the price, clearing grubbing's not included in the price, so it ends up with a much smaller bond. Take ten percent of the smaller number, may not cover you. That's why the concept of just a one-inch overlay, which might answer Mike's question, if you extended the bond period or tied the bond period into percent complete of the units developed, or lots developed. Maybe you could do that. And that would be enough to cover if there was substantial damage to the road. Or you can always repair the road in pieces too, you know, a couple hundred feet, grind it, come back in with an overlay. All you see is saw marks at either end, works pretty good. Not quite formal like you would with no lines. And after about five years, it's all the same color, bleaches out. But maybe that's the answer to tie the maintenance bond duration into how many lots are developed. Hundred percent seems a little extreme. But if they know it upfront, you know, they can plan it in their work. But hadn't thought of that one, it could work. So, I guess under that scenario, you would just put them on notice that, you know, we've accepted the road, it's got the wearing course. Maintenance bond's gonna be on air for one or two years, whatever you decide on. And then you put them on notice that says, if you haven't developed ninety percent or ninety-five percent, whatever number you pick, then the maintenance bond will be extended in time until you complete that much.
But one house could be due damage. I mean, I know it's being nitpicky, but if you have one house left, that you could damage a road, or the town be responsible? Cause we accepted it.
Yeah, if you have a lousy contractor, they start backing these little D5s out there on the pavement, and, yeah.
Well, a small subdivision represents a much higher percentage too.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. So, it could be number of lots as a metric, or a percentage as a metric. But maybe that's not a bad idea to get around it. Knowing that you have enough money if you had to repave the whole thing.
I mean, you can look at the flip side, plenty of roads handle cement trucks.
Yeah.
Plenty of houses that have had dishes put on.
Yeah, there's no guarantee that there would be any damage.
There's plenty of yards that have had hundreds, hundreds of yards that got brought in.
It's that darn contractor that decides to unload his, his dozer out on the pavement. And you got zipper marks going up the side, your road is two years old.
Looks like a new car, the first scratch always shows the most, and then once you're there for a while, you know? It is what it is.
But that's where I think the bigger issue is, you know, site contractors, they get hired and they pull up and just unload their equipment, and they don't care about the road, about their responsibility. And back out there four days later, and the edges are nicked up and shoulders broken off, and you got these zipper marks up the-
That could happen five years later, if someone puts a pool in, or puts a garage in, or puts a-
And I think, you know, on, say, a accepted street undeveloped lot, gee, a front of the lot subdivision's going all, all the time. It's up to your code enforcement to make sure it doesn't happen. Yeah, that's, that's your fallback, is to make sure that, that department is aware. And perhaps you look at your permitting process for that situation. House lot on an existing town road, thou shall not unload track-mounted construction vehicles onto the town road. Rubber tires using not at all.
Yeah, it seems more reasonable to expect not to unload the track stuff on the town road. But to accept the road sooner rather than later.
Yeah, from a taxpayer's standpoint, you can appreciate someone's, you know, writing checks twice a year, once a year, whatever, and-
Especially a house, which is-
Be told that they can't have a school bus come up there, and be told that whatever level of maintenance is happening, it's out of your control, but they're still paying the full vote of taxes, there's a disconnect. From a property owner's perspective, that's what I would feel.
Have you heard any of the towns doing anything to address the slowdown in the economy with developments going in this slowly?
Not really, I think everything is just pretty well ground and hauled. You know, you've got some nice projects here down, the privately housing in Indale, been chugging along. Every time I get on air every other month or so to check for erosion controls, a couple more foundations in, a couple more houses framed. I'm guessing by the end of the summer, they'll probably have all the foundations in. Now, there's still some movement, economy's getting a little better, so things will pick up. Pine Creek, they're building, still building up there slowly, but it's taking time.
But not all of the town roads though, right?
No, but they're subject to the same road regulations. Yeah. And the people aren't paying the taxes and everything else, but with a private development like that, take care of their own plowing, the developer or the homeowners association, once they take over, a little more conscious of the level of care, the quality of care that they get. Cause they control it, not to, once they hit the fifty percent, the homeowners association takes over.
And you still recommend it after the wearing course, it's one winter?
That's a good idea. And again, I haven't seen it in, in Litchfield in the thirty years I've been working here. It just never, has never happened that a project's been even thought of being built in one season.
So, the, well, one year for the base course, but one year also for the wearing course, or two years for the wearing course?
No, of having the wearing course put on in less than a year from the time the base course was put on, usually a couple, three years.
So, to satisfy, if we were to change that, you have one winter agent of the base course.
Yeah.
Somebody could put in a road, say, in August, September timeframe.
Yeah.
And then put the wearing course on in April, and still satisfy that.
Yeah.
So, the wearing course doesn't have to winter?
Not really, I mean, it'll winter, whether you like it or not.
Before you release-
Once you put it down.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty good, I mean, the, the quality of asphalt, the, the product, you know, you got a former road agent owns a plant down the road, his work has, has just been good. And I would expect, once the Charbonneaux's pass on, content on paving, go to someone else, you're supplying all the asphalt. And we've never had a failure of that product.
Karen Industries, Inc.?
Probably not. Probably not.
So, to kind of think through that timeline, the sequence that we're looking at is that they get approval, they get their performance bond in place, they apply the, the base course, one winter elapses, then they may apply the wearing course, make sure that all of their regulatory requirements have been met and fulfilled, it's inspected and approved, then it can go to a maintenance bond. And also, at that same time, that it goes to a maintenance bond, are we recommending that it could be accepted by the Board of Selectmen at that point, once it's been deemed okay? And there's no ti- set time period from when the wearing course is applied to when it goes to a maintenance bond or acceptance, other than it's an adequate amount of time for them to fulfill all of their regulatory requirements and be inspected.
You remember, people-
Houses, houses built too.
People are driving on that wearing course late afternoon, wearing course has been put on in the morning.
So, the, yeah, so the-
Interstate highways, all the roads are out there, they're paving it in the morning, driving on it in the afternoon.
Right, and the houses is a separate issue, we've pulled the houses out of the equation, except what we're now saying is that, once the road is accepted and the maintenance bond is in place, the maintenance bond will stay in place for a minimum of two years or until X percent of the development, or a minimum of two years, and will be extended beyond that until X percent of the development is complete.
Well, if you do it that way, then they put the wearing code on after three houses out of thirty. Why would they want to, but-
It's still okay, because if it's a mess, if it's a mess when they want the, the approval, I'm gonna say, forget about it, not gonna approve this.
Do it all the way then, they'd have-
But wait a minute, you've accepted the road in there when you went to wearing course and to maintenance bond. So, then, then I think you've got a problem if the road is a mess, and they've still got, you know, they're still building more houses.
Well, it comes back to at what point, at what point do you terminate the maintenance bond?
Right.
As long as you've got the maintenance bond, you can repave the whole road.
All right.
Essentially, you wanna have enough money to be able to do that in the maintenance bond, you repave the whole road. Once you let go of the maintenance bond, then it's on you.
What's in the maintenance bond, was enough to do the wearing coat, is that what you're saying?
Wearing course, that's what we calculate.
So, that's all you need to repay the whole road, just?
Yeah, we're, we're looking for latent defects, you know? The, the so-called inspection or observation part is part-time, and we're not out there all the time. And you can take samples, fortunately, the testing of the materials now has gotten to the point where they can do density tests with their device every other few- has gotten to the point where they can do density tests with their device every other few, minimum four hours, you do all road. Years ago, you couldn't do that. It'd take three days to do all road. So we can get good density calculations, at least on the, on the gravel part. But we're not there all the time, so, you know, something, something could slip through on a day that we weren't there. We're there for the paving. We haven't been doing lab tests on the pavement. Relying somewhat on the fact that all these plants have state people testing materials, quality of the materials at the lab on state projects. You're sort of buying the same stuff. You could go that route if you felt you wanted to. But I don't, I haven't seen any problems in all the years we've been here.
So I guess so the final question comes down is are we connecting completion of the development into determination of the maintenance bond?
I think he should do a hundred percent of development because if you have one house left and your maintenance bond is gone, one house goes in two years later and they chew up the road, then the town's repairing it.
Yeah, but what's the difference between that? And for example, there's a lot across the street in Albuquerque I want to build and I chew up Albuquerque.
State will make you fix it. Albuquerque, I'm sorry, I'm thinking three eight.
No, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is you go after the guy or the, or the, not, not the developer, but you go after the person who did the damage. And Kevin's going to know or should know who's doing the construction out there.
Probably the guy who signed the permit.
Right.
You got to tie it into the permit process. So whoever signs the permit is ultimately responsible for whoever they hire.
So what percent do you think should be done?
I'm, I'm not sure now whether, whether I think we should tie it into percent completion. I think that if a person is out there working on a new home, I'm kind of sitting here saying to myself, I don't see that any difference as to whether Joe Schmo buys a lot, like I said, off the side of Albuquerque or Page Road or Pickney Road in town and decides to put a house in. I mean, if, if, if Joe damages the house or damages the road, we, we, excuse me, we, we need to go after him somehow to get that road repaired. And if we accept the road, it's a town road, we, we have all the responsibilities to be able to go after him.
For water crossings, you have an excavation permit process which has a financial part of it. In the case of a house construction, if they're not into the road at all, I think you could still have language in there that protects the town's interest. To just say, you mess it up, you're going to fix it. You're responsible. So.
I mean, I'd stay with two years on a maintenance bond.
Oh, yeah.
But as far as road acceptance, I still want to see eighty percent of development complete.
Before accepting?
Yeah.
See, the only thing I see a problem with that is then you're going to go right back into where we are today where.
Well, but today it's in there a hundred percent.
Moose Hollow be done ten year.
Eighty percent is a lot different than a hundred percent.
Yeah, twenty percent.
Right. Two houses on a two lot, four houses on a twenty lot. And it's also a reasonable amount that's left that your risk is minimal.
So would you then, so right now, the trigger to go from, to accept is when you transition from a performance bond to a maintenance bond. Would you then?
Well, you could back that up and put the trigger from wearing course, the wearing course, make it a wearing course trigger.
Well, essentially, I think it would be a wearing course trigger anyways because you've got to have the wearing course done before you put in the.
You don't do the wearing course until you get eighty percent done.
Oh, oh, I see.
Then you go on to maintenance bond.
And then you can.
And acceptance.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't do the wearing course till you have at least eighty percent done. And then if they choose to wait until it's all done, that's up to them, but.
So that whole eighty percent.
Could be in your best interest to do that.
To do it or wait?
Uh, to wait. I mean, if they're, you know, they're in the season, they got four more houses left to do, they're going to do them all this year. Doesn't make sense if when the middle of the season, when it's over light and then with the risk of wrecking it over the next two house lot construction, let them finish all four and then pave it.
But that just fixes the issue we have with roads like Moose Hollow where it's been multiple years, it's one lot empty out of fifteen or whatever it is.
So you pick, so you pick eighty percent, seventy-five, eighty percent? But I would tie that in the wearing course.
Okay.
Because once you do, once you do the wearing course, you're essentially, you have, you have a completed road. It's more than substantially complete. You know, they do, they do the wearing course, there's typically the little punch list that we do before they do the wearing course. You got to fix this, fix that, well, spray paint cracks, you got to, whatever, eliminate it, fix curbs. And then they come in, they do all that work, and then they come in and do the wearing course and then do a little shoulder, shoulder leveling a couple days later. They're done. That thing's a hundred percent, except for the grass going. So at that point, the road would be acceptable. It would be, that would be ready for the developer to submit the other paperwork that's required. Deeds, as built, whatever else you want. Soon as that's in, boom, the clock could start for acceptance by the town. Not that you would, but it would be, it would qualify for acceptance by the town, town start maintaining it. And then, but you'd still have the, the maintenance bond redo after that one inch wearing course goes down.
Yeah, but that, that, that maintenance bond now can be in place for many, many, many years.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you're not going to let it go if there's still houses outstanding, right?
Well, that's what you're talking about now. At what point you hold on to the maintenance bond until it's a hundred percent, then you're right. You hang on to the maintenance bond until it's a hundred percent. I think in a case of, it looks like what you're talking about, the five years or something, they have more than a maintenance bond on that thing.
Well, Taninger, we have a performance bond on there. They're soon bringing in a maintenance bond. And Moose Hollow, they have to take the cul-de-sac out. They're still working on that.
Take the cul-de-sac out?
That was voted to be left in.
Why do you want it out?
But only on the condition that they could get all the mortgage peop- mortgage interest to agree to it, that abutted it, and that never happened, so. Take it out. The mortgagees had to agree.
Litchfield's only roundabout. Without an intersecting street.
Well, Southfield was.
We had all of the people from Moose Hollow in at that meeting.
Yeah, and the developer's supposed to go talk to them, and I don't know that he has yet.
And they were the ones that were adamant on keeping it in. The planning board voted to keep it.
Right, but we had the minutes at stake. You have to get the people that are holding the mortgages to agree to that. And we never got documentation that the mortgage people agreed. So when we met with them last fall, the developer, they said they, it'd be best to take it out. Jack wants it out. And the developer was supposed to talk to the abutting homeowners.
But they just built a house there too, didn't they?
Yeah.
The house went up this year.
Yeah, they, they built the house right at that cul-de-sac.
Right at the cul-de-sac, yeah.
Big pile of gravel in the middle, like it's going to start doing the work.
Okay.
Are you clear, Smith?
I, I think so. I've just kind of jotted down that process that we want to make sure we have. And then I'll go back and figure out how to turn that into regulatory language, what to do with what we have here. So we're looking at the, and make sure, I want to make sure I get this correct. Once the base course is applied, that you cannot go from performance to maintenance bond or have the road accepted until eighty percent of lots are built. And I would also throw in there in the event that it's a tiny little, you know, five lot subdivision, four lot subdivision, that, and also one winter, eighty percent of lots in one winter. And then it can be, go through the process of being inspected. And if it's okay, the wearing course can be applied and finish all the other regulatory requirements and inspected, then go to the maintenance bond. At which point then it could be accepted by the board of selectmen, the maintenance bond would stay in effect for a minimum of two years and would be extended until the subdivision is a hundred percent complete. Okay, so I've got the process.
But theoretically, they can go to a maintenance bond and as long as they finish the rest of the balance within the two years, it's still only a two-year bond, right?
Right.
What's your minimum?
Right.
Format?
It's a minimum of two years.
If you send a tax, they'll do it if there was one left.
Right. So, the other piece of this that we haven't tackled is section five point six, or we kind of did. The road maintenance bond, how, how are the prices calculated? And Lou threw out a couple suggestions and I just want to kind of get your direction on where you wanted to go with this. What I got from what you were saying is to keep what we have and maybe just update the amounts that are included.
Just update the amounts. At the time, we used the state of New Hampshire average unit prices for hot top. Based on twenty-four foot of road and so much of a lineal foot would be the cost to pave that.
Okay.
And then you key it into the construction, E and R construction cost index. And I use that because it's readily accessible. It may not be the best one. May be able to find a more specific highway related one, but I mean, that's so easy to just go find and grab. And if anything, it's going to be a little conservative and benefit the town more than the developer. It may over, overprice it a little bit.
Are those numbers that you have access to or would know which items to pull?
Things published every week in a magazine, Engineering News Record.
Okay.
So.
Yes, subscribe to that, yeah.
You don't get that in your office?
I think Steve used to, but I don't know if we still do.
Consultant, I still subscribe to it, so it's important.
Anybody do numbers today?
Excuse me?
Apparently.
Do you have any idea what that number was today?
Well, I just did one for Taninger. I don't have a letter with me, but if you'd looked at that. But I haven't compared it with asphalt prices. I didn't go back to the fifteen dollar thing.
Right.
The multiplier would be in the Taninger letter. So I, just make sure you get enough money for that one inch wearing course. And a percentage of the performance bond, I wouldn't go with because you may not, you may not get a hundred percent bonding on the performance depending on the contractor and when they start. Probably in most cases you do, but not all cases. So it's safe just to make sure that you get that enough money in there for the one inch wearing course. The other latent defect that we look at is where you're putting cross culverts. No, we got the concrete pipe in there, which is the best thing for the town. But we're not out there when they're preparing the base for that all the time. So they get a little sloppy on it, which you might find over a year is all of a sudden you get a little dip in the road. I haven't seen it, but it could happen. I think you get, you've had pretty good crews out there working. They know what they're doing, so been lucky. I've been on a state crew in New York, my first job out, putting in a sixty-inch diameter pipe, contractor had to pull it all out for, for bad base. It was just potluck that I was on a independent, the state had an independent coil crew that would go from job to job, totally unannounced, no schedule. It's like a black bag off. And we would just show up in an unmarked van and we would, we had our own equipment, do our own testing. And we just showed up on the job and they're putting in this humongous culvert and they're just rolling boulders in there. There was no resident inspector on, on the job and we watched them and snapped a few pictures and went over to the residence office and chewed his butt out. And they came back and replaced the whole pipe. So I, that's a kind of a latent defect. You don't have big pipes here, you know, twenty-four inch, maybe thirty-six. But I would be concerned that you get a little bit of a dip or, or hump depending on backfill material. Other than that, I haven't, and I haven't even seen that as a problem in town. The one other one here on procedure, five, appendix eight, five point three. You want to add paragraph B. Period for completion of improvements recommended by Litchfield's Obligies designated rep.
Yeah, that's.
Why would you ever want to?
Well, I, I think.
Figure out how long it's going to take the contractor to build this road?
I think that one's moot now by putting the timing or clarifying the timing in the process that we've talked about. And this was something that we talked about with town council about if you want it to say, you must finish it within a certain timeframe. This is how it could be done. But in terms of whether we actually wanted to keep it or not, that was not a decided upon item.
Yeah, you couldn't find a Litchfield obligation who could make an accurate prediction on what contractors are doing or what the economy is going to be. You just can't do it. I mean, if you're going to have a contract where you're going to put out, we want you to build this bridge or culvert or piece of road. Yeah, you say completion is such a date, go do it. But on a private development, you have no control over that whatsoever. So I, to me, that doesn't mean anything. Nor does putting any kind of the, the timing on the bond. You keep that forever until it's done. Someone saying you must be done by September thirtieth, two years hence, forget about it.
Good, now you have a question, but any changes we make for the timing, will we retroactive to developments that this affects? You know, like Moose Hollow, those places, if we change it now to be eighty percent complete to recognize the road, does that development count or is this going forward with the new rule?
Well, if you use the eighty percent rule, you're, you're kind of given a benefit to the developers. There's no hardship to the developers. To your maintenance bond, doesn't change you, accept the road sooner, that's a benefit to the developer, so.
So we would go back to existing developments, go, they're already in place and apply this new rule to it?
You could.
Make residents happy to have their roads planted?
But it certainly doesn't penalize a developer.
It benefits the taxpayer.
It's a little, yeah, benefits taxpayer. I would think. There's five point four C paragraph is something.
It's going to get tossed and rewritten now.
We do.
Yep.
And that was it with this package.
Yeah, and the other is just a, a repeat. That's just the, the full appendix A. The revisions were presented here in a duplicative fashion. More so because I know in the last few meetings, we've gone around in a few circles about what is, what is the process? And trying to understand the process separate from it being in three different sections of the regulations. So hence the duplication here.
City Focker, I think, which kind of was a better explanation, frequently asked questions regarding, there's one in there on acceptance and approval and.
Okay.
I think the town benefits from the geology you have here.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Guys go out there, start digging, they hit nothing but sand. Sand or rocks or ledge. You're kind of lucky to have one.
Nine four three seven point two seven. That's the January two thousand thirteen index value.
Ninety what?
Nine four three seven point two seven. That's the construction cost. Material cost?
Five, right now, we're the basis.
I can give you the material cost if you want. There's three indices. There's construction, building costs, and materials costs.
So we're using the basis of fifty-five hun- fifty-three hundred. That's less than a hundred percent change since we did the first calculation. Keep ninety-three over fif- ninety-three hundred over fifty-three hundred.
What's the number?
Nine four three seven point two seven. That's the construction cost. Now, I don't know, do you use construction, building, or material cost?
Construction cost index. Yeah, ninety-three.
And for the year change, it's up two point nine percent.
Can you put it in that we just look it up what the date is, they go for the bond?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's where the regulations. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's where the regulations.
Yeah, so it's like the market price of fish.
The thing is, I've been doing the bond calculation, so it comes, Joan just sends me a text or an email and says, do a maintenance bond calculation for some, such a road.
Yeah.
I make sure that, you know, like a Tanger, that I had the whole cul-de-sac in there and wasn't stationed and had all the whole length and, um, did the calculation on. And the only thing I got to plug in is that inch, that number Frank just called up, ninety-three something, and bingo, you got it. Done. One page later. That power.
You, you guys can be civil engineers too.
We try and make it simple.
I think it's a good workaround for what we have before. It'll help the taxpayer, which type of town.
Yeah.
Just makes sense.
Obviously, you've had good contractors out there that have been taking care of the roads in the winter. I haven't heard any complaints, uh, or issues with emergency response, but that's what it comes down to. You have convenience, which the residents will complain about, but emergency response is like a whole nother, a whole nother beast, you know? You can't let that one go. You don't have anything else?
We thank you very much for joining us this evening.
You're welcome. Nice working for the town for all this time.
All this time, yeah.
No charge this one either, so.
I must have been around that long too, because Bob Perrault was here before you, so. Lot of history here between the two of us.
So good luck with rewriting.
Get out at night much anymore?
No, I'm kind of semi-retired. I take care of Litchfield, which hasn't been too much lately, Meredith and Plainfield. And I, I had one job in Newbury a couple of years ago, so I'm not looking for new work.
You still teaching?
Yeah, I started teaching a highway course at Concord Community College at the end of the week.
You got to keep your license up to do that type of consulting?
I do.
Do you?
Yeah, I keep a business license, professional engineering license. Yeah. Still operational, just limited basis. One's my tennis thing.
That's on February fifth. I wrote that on the front there, so if you have any questions, I have escrow money, so go for it.
Is that it? We're done?
Not quite. Halfway.
Almost halfway.
And next item is an update on the impact fee status.
There is none.
There is none.
Who's easy? Check that out.
I think you need to call, um, Jason because I don't think we have a signed contract. I've started pulling documentation on the, um, housing for older persons areas because he wanted types of units. I started doing that and then he wants other documentation, I think, on housing, which I haven't looked at that closely, but. Um, right, that's, you know, we don't have it.
It's an open P O, so we must have done something.
You talking for what, in covering the money?
Yeah.
No, our, the auditor's saying that's no longer a necessity.
What, a contract?
You sold money for any reason now.
I guess.
But we need to have something from him so he can start working. So I don't know if you want to call.
There is, there is no contract. He just issued a P O against the, um.
Oh, we're not going to get a contract?
Not unless the planning board wants one. I mean, if the planning board wants one, that's fine.
So we just go off that letter that he sent, I guess. Unless Bruce wants the contract.
You just need to make sure that you have your deliverables. You know what your deliverables, deliverables are.
That was pretty clearly stated.
If that, if you're satisfied, I mean, if, if you guys want a contract, then I'm just saying that.
Well, how does he know that we're agreeing?
I'm agreeing with Joan right now that there is no contract, is what I'm doing.
How does he know that we're agreeing to what his letter said?
Because Jay, because we issued a P O against the phase one letter and then the phase two portion, there's not, the P O issued. And there probably needs to be some communication sent to him that says, yeah, we accept the terms of the second P O. And wish you to run through the first P O before you start to draw on the second one, because like I said, if you start to have two P Os open, it's going to just be a nightmare about who draws on what.
Right.
Okay, who needs to send that communication and to whom?
Do you need any, do you have any time this week to sit down and look at the, um, first letter to see what I should be collecting?
I will make time for that.
All right, let me know. I won't be here Friday morning.
If you don't hear back from me midday tomorrow, just shoot me a quick email to remind me. I, I may lose it among my, my stack of stuff early.
Okay. So a remind, a reminder, separate, there's the letter, which includes the scope of work, but there's a separate two-pager that is a detailed list of what he's looking for, for information.
I think I have that, but I'll have to check.
Okay. I can forward it to you if you don't have it. I have it because Frank forwarded it.
I forwarded it to everybody.
Yeah, you did to everyone, right?
Right.
Yeah, I must have it.
So, um, so that's the one piece for pulling documentation. Um, to just start with that list and go down that. The other question is contract. And the question, questions to be answered is, one, do we need a contract signed or does the P O suffice? And I think we need to ask that of, one, us, the board, you know, or you, the board. Um, and two, Bruce, you need to ask him if he wants a signed contract from you or if the P O is sufficient.
If you look at it this way, the, here's the couple, just to point out something to you. If you get into a dispute with Bruce, it's going to be, he said, you said.
Right.
If you have a signed contract, then there's no, there's no debate.
Right.
You got a contract.
Yeah.
Exponentially on a yearly basis.
Right.
So if you don't have a signed contract and he gets a bigger deal, he can very well do another town first. Because that's exactly what he did to us back years ago when he did that abbreviated one.
Okay, that's good to know.
Openly told me that he was just going to mirror another town and insert the language for Litchfield.
Yeah, like do a replace all.
So.
Good old word.
There, there are spreadsheets that go behind it that he will have to replace some numbers as well. But, but yes, most likely, most likely he works from a template.
He just makes those up.
Okay, so in terms of following up on, on the contract, is this something that Russ is going to directly contact Bruce or Russ will go to Jason, who will go to Bruce?
It's all in the planning board's hands.
I would suggest Russ go to Bruce.
Okay, so Russ, um, at the top, uh, Bruce's email is right at the top of the document that we have that Frank sent to all of us.
Yep.
So.
Have loss of patience.
So Russ will email. Bruce. And that's all we can do at this point. Start pulling data and get a contract. Correct? I don't think we can do anything more.
Well, you can send out. The letters to the data.
Right.
Recipients.
Yes, start collecting the data. Yes, that falls into start collecting data. Okay.
Okay, anything else or do I have enough actions out of there?
One email, that's it.
Okay.
For you. Joan's got the bigger to-do list.
Moving on, deliberative session.
All right.
Well, is that for just a few of you or I just put, stuck that in there so we wouldn't forget?
That's fine, we can all. I made enough copies. Those are just speaking points and, um, if you, if our, our folks have thoughts or suggestions for what our two designees have, maybe we can in, in, uh, ten minutes or less, make some suggestions or review the, the speaking points. Um, just as an update, I have touched base with Jason. When he has the PowerPoint template, he will send that to me and we'll, I'll do up a couple slides for this. Um, and Russ and Michael, we can chat after the meeting just about what you would prefer to have on those PowerPoint slides, um, behind you as you speak. Um, but otherwise, what I've done in the meantime is for each of the items that you have out there, I've pulled the Warren article question as well as just some bullets for things that we've mentioned that, for the multifamily, uh, really, I just went through the frequently asked questions and kind of took the, I don't know, ten-page frequently asked questions and synthesized it into one page of bullets. Uh, for the rezoning area, um, those are, you know, we went back to the minutes when we discussed this here and just pulled out some of those key points that were mentioned as to why the, the rezoning should happen. From all of your experiences in the past at deliberative session, are there certain messages that resonate better than others? Uh, or advice or guidance that you would give to your two representatives?
Yes.
That will be presenting?
Always stay behind the screen because the fruit that gets thrown will hit the screen.
Chain link friends in front of the stage.
Correct, so the beer bottles will come through. It's like that band movie there, whatever it was.
How can we say a rough estimate show would be possible for about ninety possible structures?
Because I crunched the numbers, or I should say Sarah, who's our G I S analyst, crunched the numbers. That's looking at all of the parcels that you have. Um, and deducting out, um, the undevelopable portions of the land, uh, what is left and then just assuming that the area is contiguous, what that calculation would be for the number of structures, just purely on a mathematical basis. Of taking the total number of acres that remain after deducting those, um, undevelopable areas and dividing it by the minimum lot size.
So this is not counting for that couple of pages?
Correct. Because that's separate and contingent upon the rezoning.
Do you, do you have to say agricultural? I mean, is, is, is someone that lands on agricultural now? Because I mean, that just, people are going to go, no, automatically see that it's going to take farmland.
Yeah, so, um.
Because.
I know, I think I circulated these and they were up on the Google site from a previous meeting. There's more detail in the frequently asked questions that specifically goes into those and how many acres of what and all that good, good detail. And then there's also the Excel spreadsheet that shows, shows the calculations for each individual parcel that's in that computation. I have a handful of the frequently asked questions. I can float them or you can save them for whatever you choose.
Is that in a form that could be handed out at deliberative session?
Yeah. Yeah, I could use, I could get this to Jason for printing or I could print some color copies. Whatever you guys would want. Here, float them around so that folks can decide what they would like to do with that. That was my other question is what resources and materials do you need from me in advance of deliberative session? And, um, I will get whatever printed, produced, and dropped off here at Town Hall.
Are you coming to deliberative session?
I was not planning to, if I did not need to, um, but would drop things off in advance. Did Steve normally come to deliberative session?
No.
Okay.
Steve was always there.
Right up there on the stage.
You kids are funny. Um, to be honest, I, I think that, um, when it comes down to key messaging, the one thing you have to ask is who is the best messenger? And I'm not the best messenger, not for public speaking skills, but purely because of the fact, I'm not a resident from Litchfield.
Exactly.
Um, I am your, your contracted planner, uh, and I can give you planning assistance and planning, you know, technical support. But in the end, the decisions have to be yours and you have to be the voices that carry them. Uh, and so it's probably better that I'm, for those reasons, better that I'm not there. And then you can say whatever you want. I'll never know.
The replays are posted online. Can you post up your email address and your phone number?
At my office, that's fine.
I'd like the handout because I, points one and two, why this has to be done. I mean, it slams in the face where it's required by law and if you don't do it, it's going to happen.
Yeah. Okay, so in terms of what you want for materials, you want frequently asked questions printed up?
Yes, please.
Yes, please. Do you want them in color or black and white? That dictates who prints, Jason versus me.
Do we see any value to color? I think we'll be mad to get color handout. It's always the right. So I think.
It's just a black and white and I'll send Jason a PDF to print out?
Tax money right here. Just five cents that I'm not going to get back. Now, people look at color copy like, why are we printing color copies for deliberative? That's a great point.
Okay. I can send them to Joan. Joan, who should I send that to? You or to Jason to print up here?
To me.
Okay.
I do have that impact fee, um, list.
Hmm?
I have that impact fee list that you just showed me.
Oh, okay. Okay. Do you need a new version of the proposed zoning changes map, the large map? Is that one adequate?
Well, that re, that reflects the new change, right?
I believe so.
Does that show the change?
It excludes the commercial district, right? Yeah, it has both. It's got, uh, one hash mark boundary for the proposed zoning, uh, for changes to the transitional and commercial industrial. It's got a separate hash mark for the proposed multifamily.
On a personal level, can you get me a picture just of the top, um, of Litchfield, the commercial industrial and commercial district as well as the bottom?
Okay.
Um, commercial. And you don't have to send it to me as a real, if you can send it to me in like a, I don't know what's the easiest format, JPG, even, I can cut and paste.
JPG or PDF?
Yeah, either one I can do probably. I need to, I've got a separate warrant coming up for
Okay.
Um, um, monies to do a sewer study.
Okay.
And those are the two areas that we would be hitting. And the idea is to construct intermunicipal agreements. And what I'm trying to show is the reason why we want to do Hudson, why we want to do Manchester, because of their proximity.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Yep. So you need two different JPGs. One to show commercial industrial north and one to show commercial industrial south.
Yeah, I'm saying if you could make it so that it, yeah, I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Okay. All right. Separate. Okay, in terms of being ready for deliberative session, what else do you guys need? For materials and for just the F A Q and do you need a new version of the map or you want to just grab that one or?
I think we can just run with that one. It's got all the information that we need.
Would it help to have it on PowerPoint?
It certainly would.
What I'll do is I'll do zoom-ins of those particular. What I'll do is I'll do zoom-ins of those particular areas on the PowerPoint.
And maybe show the call one showing...
The multifamily, I'll zoom in on the multifamily north, multifamily south, and then I'll do a separate zoom-in.
That may be the same thing I'm hoping to do, so you could kill two birds, maybe.
Yeah, but then you'd have the overlap. Uh, I can, it'll be easy enough, it's just toggling layers. Okay. Anything else?
Should be able to come up with a, a presentable spiel for this. What about you, Michael? You ready to be set up as human sacrifice with these talking points?
What we can talk about afterwards is just how we link up the bullet, the speaking points to what you have on a slide, and how you, how you want me to...
Yeah.
Provide that behind-the-scenes support for your presentations. As in, piles up the road behind the scenes.
I'm sorry, is one of the slides going to be, um, you know, a statute? Do we want to put that in there, or do we want to?
I'm not...
My, I guess my question is, do we want to focus on the multifamily aspect?
I, oh, I was going to do slides for each separate warrant article.
Right, but to support the multifamily one...
Right, to support the, the idea that this is, you know, this is what the legislature has given us.
Right, we, yeah, we can do some things like that, we can talk about what we would...
I think you need to stress, on the multifamily, you need to stress that it's an opportunity, you have to allow an opportunity for someone to build.
Right.
Right. You've got it worked out already, you've convinced me. You want to control it, not have it be controlled for you?
Right.
Right.
Should we put this up on the town website, too? Because people are going deliberative, we're a very small number compared to the votes.
The, um, normal, normal protocol is that the planning board slides will be part of the whole slide deck that's used for all of deliberative.
Okay.
That whole thing gets put up on the town website.
With the frequently asked questions, too.
We can put on the planning board page.
Frequently asked questions, you can put any, yeah, you can put those up there if you want.
Yeah, it'd be good to get as much information out as early as we can, as wide of an audience as we can.
Okay, so this weekend, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, okay.
Just to let you know that, uh, at tonight's board of selectmen meeting, they're looking to try and get all the slides in by Monday.
Okay.
No pressure.
Well, we'll be doing the slides in tomorrow or Thursday.
Perfect.
Assuming I have a template.
You don't really need a template, just, just...
It's going to be nice to Jason.
Just set it to a...
If I don't have the template, I'll send him one again?
Yeah, let him crash it.
Was it February second again?
Yeah.
It's part of the Groundhog Day festivities.
Ten, ten o'clock.
Punxsutawney Perry.
I have a stuffed groundhog.
What time is it starting?
Ten o'clock.
A M.
Yes. School's on Thursday, so...
February, when?
Second.
Second. Saturday.
Thursday or Wednesday?
I thought it was Wednesday the sixth.
The sixth, what's the sixth? Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday, Wednesday, the sixth.
That's the sixth.
Oh, that's right.
They changed it from Thursday?
Wednesday, February sixth, school.
Changed it again.
Now, the town was going to be on Thursday the seventh, but then when the Saturday, the second, was available, they chose that.
Didn't the school take the seventh then?
No, it's...
Half of it is the school originally booked it for the second.
But then lawyer couldn't do it.
Right, and we were thinking of going the ninth, but the problem with the ninth is, that's the last date you can go under the state statutes. So if we had a weather problem, we'd be out of luck.
And nobody knows how to drive.
So we, we then decided to go to the seventh, we say we'd, we'll hold it the seventh as a town, and then our fallback date is the ninth if we have to, because of weather, change the date. And then when the school changed the whole thing to the sixth, we said, screw it, we're going the seventh.
So school's February sixth at seven?
Correct.
Yeah. Anything else about deliberative? Prove the minutes of the January eighth meeting. Does anyone, everyone have a chance to review those minutes?
Sorry, they got it a little late.
You ready? Make a motion to approve the minutes in...
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying?
Who second, who second?
I run, they did.
Joe?
Tom.
Tom?
Don't forget the seventh, so it's not late.
Oh, yes, thank you. And any other business? We have a note of cottage design, Tom, is that yours?
Yes.
Yes, Tom went, went to the seminar for me, thank you, Tom.
Yeah, last Friday, he went to a seminar for Plan New Hampshire. Unfortunately, they didn't hand out too much, I'm trying to get more information for you. It's basically a cottage concept, wherein, like, the piece of land where the gazebo is, you could put six housing units, and fit them in. They're all small, nine hundred to eleven hundred square feet, full, footprint. So if you have two floors, you know, have bedrooms upstairs. It's a good, it's a good fill-in, something to look at. I will be hopefully getting some pictures of it available, so you can see what they look like. And we'll go from there.
I think three of them might be average house nowadays.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, instead of putting one house on two acres, where you don't need it, you get two people living in a thirty thousand square foot house, doesn't make sense. Another thing, if anybody is interested, on the same night as the school deliberative, is N R P C is holding a legislative forum in Nashville. If anybody would like to go to that, it's the same night.
I'll be in trance to watch my school board sign my name.
I'll watch the replay.
Yeah. Go for the dinner.
Is there a, a guest list of speakers whom we can expect to meet there?
Well, all the commissioners from the towns?
The commissioner should be there, our legislators are invited.
Except I won't be there.
To be honest, I don't know who was on the invite list, and I do not know if they have presentations planned, or...
Yeah, well, Christopher Clements is going to be a keynote speaker.
Okay, there you go.
And one of the, two of the items that are coming up is the thirty-sixth South and rail transportation.
Yeah.
Those are two of the highlights, is, is going to be brought up at it. There is a chicken dinner.
D O, is D O T going to talk about rail transportation?
It's one they were asked to, uh...
Still my heart.
Give an update. There are some in there that are for it, believe it or not.
They can do something besides build a road, yay!
It is a six o'clock, it is R S V P, so if you want to go, you can let me know.
Or you can email Karen.
You have it, and Russ has it, so you let Joe, Nora, and Emerson just...
Or you can email Karen on that paper.
Anybody think they'd like to go?
I would like to carpool with somebody, because parking over there is not that adequate. Good point. So call me. Next week, week after.
That's all I have?
Thank you, Tom.
No problem. Oh, one thing I do want to ask, everybody did get the update I sent out on the planning commission?
Yep.
The projects?
Yep, thank you. Is there any other business?
Make a motion adjourned.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? We are adjourned, thank you very much for joining us this evening.